I will call the meeting to order this evening and I would please ask all of you to join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. If you now would all rise for the pledgeful allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Board Member Esther Williams will be joining us in the next five to 10 minutes and I will ask Jesse Knight to read our mission statement this evening.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education in support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Jesse. And now is the time of our meeting that we open it up to individuals and delegations that would like to address the board. Is there anyone here this evening? We have a caveat that we will read if there is anyone that wants to address the board. If not, we will move on. So raise your hand or come up if you do. Looks like no one. Thank you. So we will move on to our first exhibit A on page one. And this is the STEM Best High Demand Program Grant. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude the $40,000 STEM Best High Demand Program Grant from the Governor's STEM Advisory Council as outlined.
So move.
Second. Thank you. And we have Amy here tonight to come up and tell us all about this exciting news.
Yeah, very exciting news. I worked hard on this grant and worked with Kyle Kuehl, who's our IT instructor. He's got a lot of exciting things going on already in our IT department. As you know, we have a cyber defense patriot team where kids have been exposed to the cyber world in the last year. So lots of exciting things happened there and then he's implemented a little bit of curriculum into his classes. So this will give us an opportunity to really grow that program and grow opportunities for student engagement, a variety of different software curriculum needs in that area. So we're very excited about this. And this isn't a typical one-to-one grant. It's a two-to-one. So the $40,000, in addition to that, will be the $20,000 we've set aside through Perkins funding.
The Cyber Cypher Patriot Club of the National Youth Cyber, are those for younger students? That's still just older high school?
Current high school. Yep. He recruited within the schools and got that started a year ago and they've been very successful, learned very quickly. So I'm excited to have more support to continue to grow that high need area.
Is this the group that went to state?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
And is it open for freshmen sophomore? Do you have to be in like a cyber, you know, IT stuff at the WCC?
Nope. It kind of started with student interest, you know, talking to teachers within the district and it's grown from there, so.
And I can share, could I just share one more thing that Amy and I have talked about too with, if you remember when we first started our programs way back when, we had two IT programs. We had the web and mobile and then we had the networking. Do you remember that? And as times have changed, one of the, one of the things, when we built the Waterloo Crew Center, it was really important that we were able to turn on a dime as far as to respond to the programs and the need out there. So as the need has really changed to this cyber program, you're seeing us expand into cybersecurity more than, originally that really, we had talked about it maybe just, you know, for a fleeting moment back in 2016, 2017, when we were launching programs, but really the networking seemed the right way to go. And we do have courses that still start students down that path. But the cybersecurity program has really come on scene as far as occupational forecasting intensely over the past few years. And so I'm really excited that we are able to respond to that need. We've been asked about it. We've been asked to let students start down the path of the occupation of cybersecurity. It's definitely needed and we know that. And our students, for all intents and purposes, think it's fun. They, you know, they're very interested in that, in that area. And so when Amy and her team were thinking about, you know, how do we fund a launch of a program? Because you know, different programs have different costs. This was one of the pieces that, and I know, I really commend Amy. I know she worked very hard on this grant to get it ready to go. And so to, to secure this kind of money is really a great thing. It's not the only way that we're funding our work around the cybersecurity program and the, the team that, you know, is working. But this is just one piece of that puzzle. So I'm super proud of that work.
Well, and it's cool because one of the last dollar scholar programs at Hawkeye is cybersecurity. So it's seamless then.
Yeah, it really is.
And I have to give thanks to a lot of our Cedar Valley businesses who have been a tremendous support. I wrote them down so I made sure GMT, VGM, VGM Forbin. And then two IT professionals, Greg Probst and Dawson Medlin in Visual Logic UX have really been heavily involved in that cyber patriot. I think they practice two times a week and these professionals are coming with experience, you know, firsthand for these kids and the opportunities they're getting, so.
I think it's really timely. If you look at the national surveys, particularly for the groups that are underrepresented in STEM, females and minorities, two items are listed. One is lack of access to high-quality STEM programs. So I think we're very, very fortunate here that we, we have a high-quality program available to anybody. The second one was lack of early awareness of the STEM ones that exist. So, so this certainly supplements number one, but we have to, at the same time, I think, complement that with, with number two so that we not only have the great program that you're developing, thank you, but that kids are aware of it. So we get the underrepresented in particular more opportunity there.
I have to commend Kyle, our instructor, for that as well. He has that in mind in a lot of the things that he comes and brings forth with me. One of the ideas in the grant, he's talking about creating pods to increase collaboration amongst kids in that program. Because a lot of times that's individual work. So that's something that's part of this grant.
That's super. And there's no stipulations in how you can, I mean, no stipulations, but using the dollars, you have, you know, innovative ideas, flexibility, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Curriculum support, professional involvement for the instructors and, yeah, pretty open.
Well, great. So thank you very much, Amy. And all in favor of accepting the $40,000 STEM Best High Demand Grant from the Governor's STEM Council? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Chair votes aye, carries six zero. Thank you very much, Amy. Appreciate it. Now, we will move on to our consent agenda tonight and it consists of about eight items. Item B is the minutes of the February 14, 2022 regular board meeting. Item C, the personnel appointments and adjustments. Item D, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item E, the donation from RJ McElroy Trust. Item F, the set date of public hearing, 2022-23 school district calendar. Item G, the date, set date of public hearing, West High Gym Floor Replacement Project. Item H, approved notice to bidders for the West High Gym Floor Replacement Project. And item I, adjusted 21-22 board meeting dates. Are there any of these that we would like to have removed from the agenda?
G's and George.
G?
E.
E? Anybody else? Okay, so, all in favor of accepting? Okay, so make a motion to accept the items B, C, D, F, H, and I.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Now, we will move to item E, which is the donation from McElroy Trust. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude the donation in the amount of $5,800 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 21-22 Youth Emergency Fund as presented. So move.
Second.
And discussion.
Just as always, I just wanted to make people aware of it and to thank the trust for, again, a very generous donation to be used when, when it comes up. So, thank you.
Yes, we'll get that to them. Normally we had Shanley, but just for the public, that any donation over $2,500 has to be approved by the Board of Education. And so this was $5,800. And the money is used for emergency fund purposes at, these are the schools for this particular $5,800. Cunningham School of Excellence, Kingsley Elementary, Kitchell Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, Central Middle, and Hoover Middle. And these can be used for discretionary purposes such as clothing, medical expenses, activity fees, et cetera, financially supporting our schools and our students in those great need areas, so.
And it might be helpful to recognize this as money to replenish. They, it's kind of like a revolving. So that's why certain buildings get it at certain times because when they replenish it, then the next time it might be a different building, so.
Okay. So, all in favor of accepting this $5,800 donation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Then we'll move on to item G, which is the set date of the public hearing for the West High Gym Floor Replacement. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the date of March 28, 2022 at 5:00 PM to hold the public hearing for the West High Gym Floor Replacement Project. So move.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion.
Yes, my question in regard to this was not necessarily about the West High Gym, but more so that when will East High Gym get replaced? Because of the Mississippi Valley Conference.
Yep, absolutely. So they are actually one year apart. And so West was up this year and East is one year behind it. So we, as you can probably guess, we can't really replace both floors at one time, not because of the cost, but because of the usage. So they are on a schedule. So the, the average life of a floor is approximately 20 years. Sometimes you can eke 24, 22 years out of it, or 20 to 22 years. Both, West is at 23, I believe. So we've gotten an extra year even beyond the higher span of that. And I believe that East is at 21 years. So they're really close. So we are planning to bring to you next spring. Not me, because I won't be here, but we will bring before you the, the floor for East for next year, which actually coincides with the lettering, which is good with the new, the new conference too. So, yep, they're right behind.
Okay.
Thank you.
It depends on how often they're finished, because they have to be sanded down each time they're refinished. And in the case of West, the nails are starting to, to show. They're not a danger right now, but that's why it's being replaced.
I don't know what I missed. So will the, the painting be done on East for this coming year?
We were just discussing that Indy had.
I just asked that question.
Yeah, I will have to check on that. I'm not exactly sure about that. I know they will refinish them. I know they'll refinish them, but I'm not really sure about that. Yeah, yeah, they'll strip and seal, but I'm not sure about that, so.
And then the banner change needs to be done too.
We'll have to get, we'll get that information to you.
Okay, perfect. Are there any other questions regarding that? And that public hearing will be March 28 at 5:00 here in the board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries seven zero. Okay, now we will move on to item J on page 28. And that is the curriculum adoption for the Waterloo Elementary Music. And we have people here in the audience, Dr. Mohorn and, is Ryan?
Yep. Ryan is grabbing Travis.
Okay, perfect.
Travis is here. I know he's here. So I'll just give you a little background before they.
Wait, I, I'll get it on the table first, sorry. So the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of game plan and purposeful pathways along with the necessary supporting instruments and materials at a cost of $539,252.35 for the elementary programs as outlined. So move.
Second.
Thank you. And Dr. Mohorn.
Okay. I just want to give you a little bit of background. In, the last time this was done for this particular, for elementary music was in 2009. And as you know, we try to update every about eight to 10 years depending on the age, how much things have changed. Unfortunately, we had some staffing issues in 18, 19, and 1920. And then, of course, in 20, COVID really changed things. So it's taken us a while. We're really trying to catch up with the new curriculum adoption. So that's why this, it's not lockstep in what we've been trying to do, but we're really trying to catch up and not leave anybody out there.
Okay. Thank you.
There we go.
And we have lots of people here. So if you want to introduce everybody and then kind of explain your process and your choices and anything you'd like to tell us about this exciting curriculum.
Would love to. So first, I'm Travis Gerthozennel. I am the teacher leader or instructional coach for Fine Arts. Under that umbrella, you saw me last year with visual art. I'll be coming up eventually, I think, with PE. So it'll be great. And secondary music. I have Ryan Christopher here. We've been collaborating on this endeavor. And Tyler Babno, music teacher over at Kingsley, will kind of be our spokesperson for the group and our process. So I learned that we have not had a curricular review since about 2009 for elementary music. And that was back, if any of you remember Martha Cruz and even Terry Brant, they were on that committee. And so 2009 was a little while ago. And then in 2014, state of Iowa, or the nation adopted music standards. In 2017, Iowa then adopted those standards for elementary general music and then secondary ensemble music making as well as some other ensemble offerings. Starting last school year, we worked as a team, Ryan and I, and then the 11 elementary music teachers to review some materials from our various companies, our past spotlight on music to see if there was a current updated version that was worthwhile. And unfortunately, did not make the cut. Instead, other options that we chose were game plan, which is a K5 curricular resource, as well as purposeful pathways to build a holistic elementary music curricula. In, should I go into briefly, in the proposal is not only the adoption, our teachers went through and decided each semester, what skills and concepts that we're going to cover to ensure that not only those performances are accounted for, but also our 21% roughly mobility rate is the, those are the last numbers that I have received. So to ensure that students had quality experiences in every building, we worked together to curate a list of curricular needs and instrumental needs to ensure that every classroom is stocked with the utmost, like, the best equipment that we can get, knowing that teachers are rarely able to actually upkeep many of the instruments because they're just taking a toll. And, and kids, if you've ever seen a kid play a drum, you know that they, they can play that drum. And so our request this evening is just to adopt the curriculum as well as the funds to purchase all the needs to enact the curriculum. And that dollar amount is in the agenda that comes to $539,252.35. And I'm gonna tell you, West music gave us one heck of a deal. It was originally over $600,000.
And I do want to jump in and just remind everyone, that's for 11 buildings. So although the price tag seems enormous, but that is for 11 buildings. So when you look at it that way.
Okay, do we have any questions? I was just wondering, were all of each of the schools represented on the committee and gave their input? I see, I like your chart and all the different prices and what's needed at each building. How do you determine what's needed at each building?
So the teachers curated a list of kind of cross-referencing their current inventories and then what would be the optimal Waterloo elementary music experience. And so what they did is they went through and they determined, we would like these instruments to enact this curriculum and provide quality experiences as well as like, here's what I actually need for my building, knowing I have space limitations. I have veteran teachers that already stocked our equipment really, really well. Or we had stuff in storage within the classrooms that we were able to account for. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
So when the state came down with their new, I won't say mandate, but their requirements for the music, what are the two major changes that came from the state from 2009 to now?
So in 2009, we used to have, and those standards even prior were from 1998, and they were nine standards really about can sing alone with others, a variety of repertoire, same with instruments, same with understanding music in its relation to culture and history as well as other disciplines. A big change that we've witnessed were four universal strands of creating, performing, responding, and connecting. And within those, we, we kind of see the 98 standards or 2009 reference standards souped up. And then some with kids actually creating and then performing and engaging with music in richer ways.
To what extent do the students have choice on their instrument? I guess my question is, in some cases, do we just not have enough and say, well, you gotta play something else?
So how it works, actually, I'd like to turn this over to Tyler because you can probably see.
So my name is Tyler Babno. I'm the music teacher over at Kingsley Elementary. And my school's a great example. So right now, if I were to have a full class of fourth grade, let's say 25 students, I currently have eight ORF xylophones. So a lot of the times, we're doubling students up on an instrument or we're taking turns. So we'll have kind of split into two groups. This group will do something else while this group is on those specific instruments. And, I mean, we're all creative people. We'll, we'll make the lessons work. But when we have enough instruments for, for the exact purpose that we're looking for in those lessons, it just really helps us save time because also we don't get to see everyone every single day. So the, the minutes we spend with our students are really important and really impactful.
So this proposal provides for that?
Yes, we've, like Travis said, we've gone through all of our instrument inventories and everyone's kind of figured out what they need in order to meet that, that standard that we want to set for our instrument inventories.
Also, do you have a goal of student interest in continuing on with music after?
Yeah, so one thing that we really like to focus on, especially, I know me personally in fifth grade, is looking at those extensions into sixth grade and beyond. With getting more instruments into students' hands, I'm sure it will only increase their interest in performing later on in their school careers and middle school and beyond, especially in terms of like percussion instruments and string instruments. Because if you saw, like, this is also including ukuleles in all 11 elementary buildings now. So just beyond even percussion instruments.
Do we keep track of that or?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, we do. So I am really big into recruitment and retention, looking at how we have compulsory general music in fifth grade. So every kid's going to have that. In sixth grade, we have a bit of a change where we have ensemble educations of band, choir, and orchestra. For students that do not elect to be in those ensembles, they would have a sixth grade general music setting. And so I don't have those numbers like with me right now, but I have the six-year trends that I've had for the last, well, six years, I guess, as of a couple of weeks ago. So I can definitely get those to you. But I know that we see, I was formerly at Hoover and I saw like 80%, if not more, students continue from R4 elementary feeders into secondary music, at least for a sixth grade experience. And I think that that's pretty typical in most buildings.
Is that, is the proportion the same in the other middle schools, do you think? I mean, I know Hoover, you know, their band sometimes is bigger than West, I think.
Yeah.
But are the other schools, do they have the same level of interest?
For the most part, yes. I know that things have been a little wonky over the last few years. I know with, with pandemic concerns and how that's directly and indirectly affected our, our enrollment in those programs. But we are seeing an uptick, which is really cool. I think it's really challenging to see that guaranteed continuation from K5 up into high school. Just like looking at that middle school experience is probably where we could devote a lot of our time to ensure that kids then continue into that second, or that high school experience.
I'm really excited for you guys and thank you so much for the work that you do every day with the students and bringing them the joy and understanding and appreciation of music. If they go on into the ensembles, awesome. If not, okay, they understand and appreciate music in a way that they didn't before and feel better about their day. So thank you so much for the work that you do.
Thank you. And to that point, whether or not students choose an ensemble education, we're really looking at how can kids using music as a verb, how can they music in their community post-high school? Like that, that experience, like we're laying the foundation. Elementary, I taught pre-K12 my first two years of teaching. And what they do is to, like, words cannot describe what an elementary music teacher is experiencing with all the emotions. with all the emotions and the joys and the sounds and all that stuff.
Can I ask a question of Tyler? So what is your day, how is the day gonna change then, from how it has been?
As like our typical workday?
Yeah, what, do the lessons look a lot different using this programming or?
Oh, so using, using the new curriculum, to be honest, it wouldn't change our lessons too much. I mean, this is, there's really great lessons in there that will provide great support for our students, I mean, K-5. So what we'll do basically is, if you look at the proposal, there's a semester kind of guide that goes by grade level and by, it kind of goes through the standards from the state of Iowa. And we've already guaranteed that this curriculum meets those. So in every semester, we're guaranteeing like in 4th grade of our spring semester, every 4th grade student in Waterloo will experience like playing recorders. We're guaranteeing that. So it's not gonna look terribly different from like what, like the standards wise, but the curriculum itself will be a little bit different. And especially with those purposeful pathways as kind of like a supplemental curriculum, it'll really ensure that we're reaching all of our students and our curriculum just doesn't have that.
Will you still be teaching the kids Beatles songs? You're not gonna give that up, right?
No, I've got a music concert next week and of course, we're doing Beatles songs.
Okay. Mallory'd kill me if I didn't ask.
Oh, of course.
And just a question, if an instrument breaks, what's the replacement process?
Yeah, so, so these instruments are pretty expensive, but luckily their replacement parts aren't that terribly expensive. So like, for instance, a very common problem with our xylophones is there's these little rubber pegs that kind of hold the bar in place. If that gets ripped off by a student, it's as simple as kind of like unscrewing it with a piece of pliers and re-putting it and tooling it. So the cost for that is not very great. It's the cost of if bars were to snap and break. But we are very protective of our instruments. So that rarely, rarely never happens. I will cry if that happens.
And would you guys mind introducing the staff that's here tonight?
Oh, sure. Wanna come on up?
Yeah.
I'm Ryan Haynes from Orange Elementary.
I'm Chelsea Beckwith from right next door Lowell Elementary.
I'm Carrie Jo Rudin from Lincoln.
Hi, I'm Carrie Jo Rudin from Lincoln.
I'm Andrew Scruggs from Ketchikan Elementary.
I'm Brennan Steele from New Henry Elementary.
If you didn't, that is Chelsea Beckwith and she's right next door enjoying a brand-new music room at Lowell.
So if this is approved, when will these items and this curriculum and the instruments be delivered? Do we know?
Delivery is interesting. Order could go out tomorrow. I'm trying to make a little humor here, I guess. So unfortunately, we are dealing with supply chain issues. I know last year when I went through the visual art, you can probably do this. I'm real good, but I taught middle school, everyone. So due to supply chain issues, I know like visual art, we had things ordered last academic year, but it couldn't get here until like November. And that might just be par for the course. I know some of our secondary programs currently ordering from West Music are experiencing delays. Unfortunately, I wish I had a better answer. I think it's gonna be a hit or miss. But with West knowing that we're probably, that we're intending on making an order, they kind of already have our bid ready and those next steps just prepared.
But do we have a contract with West Music or anybody else on an ongoing basis to do the more serious repairs?
Yeah, depending on the severity, West Music is kind of our go-to. And then depending on the type of instrument, they'll either perform the repair for us or they'll refer us to someone who can best assist.
So what are the odds, Travis, of us ever getting banned back into the elementary schools?
That is an excellent question and one that unfortunately, I think further conversation should occur. But I came in after that change occurred, so I've only had the bits and pieces along the way. I would love to have greater conversation about what that could look like.
All of you staff and instructors, because we appreciate your input and we appreciate your work every day. So thank you very much. So no more questions, all in favor of approving this wonderful new instrument array we will be getting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried, 7-0. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Travis. Okay, next up, we have Exhibit K on our agenda. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the supplemental pay proposal for all WESP and ASME employees as presented.
So move.
Second. Thank you very much. And we have Kingsley Batsroy here, the Chief Officer of Human Resources and Equity, to go over this with us. Thank you. Hit your toggle.
We'll just give him a moment to bring. Matt, do you notice that? Two-step verification. That makes Matt happy.
I was super worried about how quickly that was gonna come up.
Oh, I know. Oh, that's a problem. No, he's talking about something at work.
Oh, good, okay. So today, I'm just excited because we get the opportunity to talk to you about something that we've been working on. It feels like months, honestly. And I think that I want to give a lot of credit to a number of different people. Obviously, Michael Coughlin, Dr. Lindeman, just her support throughout this process. Amber McGivern, Heather Hovey, the union leadership for the WSP group. Ray Force, who's not here today, but also Robin White as well, who is, Ray Force is the director, Uniserv Director for WSP and WA, as you know. But also, Robin White is the ASME Director. And just the conversations and feedback that we've had throughout this has been very collaborative. You know, this goes to show, I've talked a little bit about it at the, I think Sue was at, the conversation in Des Moines about our union relationship. I think it's amazing. It's a beautiful thing. I wouldn't feel as comfortable saying it if it wasn't a good relationship. We've just really worked hard, meeting regularly, talking about tough issues and just coming to really collaborative effort. But again, that doesn't happen without Dr. Lindeman's leadership. And so we're gonna talk a little bit about supplemental pay and what this means. And so in general, you know, you've been up here and asked me a number of questions. You know, I can name the board members, Aster, Stacy, Lyle, that have asked me a number of questions every time you see on the board agenda the personal appointments and what that means from that standpoint. As you see employees come and go, you know, what about, what about WSP? But WSP, I think that's Aster that's been asking that particular question. And it's been on our heart and minds, obviously, not only from you, but the feedback that we received as well. And so with the COVID-19 pandemic and labor shortages, it has hit our WSP and ASME groups harder than the rest of our groups for many different reasons. So this plan is going to highlight not only the current hourly pay, the proposed, and also a little bit of the why, as well as insight on the impact of the increase.
Kingsley, would you please state what WESP stands for, for our viewers and ASME and what they include? Because we know that they don't.
Yeah, so WSP is our Waterloo Education Support Personnel. And our, they include our secretaries, clerk typists, par educators, BIS. I'm missing one more group. And in our ASME group, that group represents our custodians, our food service personnel. And I can't remember what ASME is off the top of my head. I know it's the American Federation. Anyways, can't remember all the acronyms with that. So this is the, so I'm gonna try to walk you through, and this is, it's complicated, but not complicated from an HR standpoint, but, and a finance standpoint, but it is important. So you know, right on the, on the first column, you'll see our step increase, which is our salary schedule for our WSP folks. And we're talking about WSP first. You'll see the current wage. What this doesn't include, and I want to make sure this is also an education for the public as well, while this shows, again, we start anybody without any experience. So if you have no experience working with kids, you start at 1323. If you work at a daycare or you work with any other agency that has experience with kids, you can move up and down this step schedule or the salary schedule, as we like to call it. So if you have four years of experience, you would start at step five. The important piece also to mention here is a note is this does not include retention, longevity, or differential pay. We have differential pay for position and we also have differential pay based on your education as well. So when people say, hey, everybody starts out at, this is the starting wage at 1323, that really isn't true, since I've been here. Michael and I have worked hard about how we've been able to move people on different places in the salary schedule to make sure that we're honoring their experience as they come to Waterloo School District. So what does this show? The first column shows the current hourly pay of our WSP group. Again, this is a straight pay. The second shows what we're proposing tonight is to be the $2 increase on top of that. So if you remember from some of our conversations around our negotiations process, we were looking at a three-year agreement that wanted to make sure that we were 15, at $15 at the top of our schedule by 2022, 2023 school year. Again, I want to just point to, you know, Michael's brilliance on the proposal and the work that he's done with this because basically it flips that on its head and immediately tries to bring anybody coming in with no experience to $15 and affects the entire schedule. So you have $2 across the entire schedule. And that would take place immediately. As soon as we get done here, there's a lot more, assuming the board approves, there's a lot more work that has to be done as far as, you know, sending a message out to our staff for aware. And then our teams are gonna be working ferociously to make sure that this happens on the March 11th payroll. So that's very important as well. The $2 increase is for the remainder of the year. And the $1 increase is for the 2022, 2023 school year. It's not just a flat dollar, it's 50 cents on top of the regularly already negotiated 50 cents as well that would move it. So that would start every single person with no experience at 1623. One last piece of this that is probably the most important piece of this is what we're calling, really it's gonna probably be called the Retention Escalator or Retention Differential, is that any individual that's worked in our district, and this has been important just because of the concerns and maybe commentary and feedback that you heard, but also the concerns and commentary and feedback that I've heard as well, individuals that are district that have worked here, you know, longer than four years will get a 50 cent increase every single, every single four years. And so what that looks like is, we have a couple of examples, actually. So this shows the examples of Person A, Person B, Person C, Person D. And these people, these are people to me, as I know the names on the screen, but I didn't want to share that information off to the public. This does actually include the differential and other pieces, or other pay. And so that's why the numbers are a little bit different. For example, 35 years, that's 1454, which is the top of our salary schedule. But it also, 1454, which is the top of our salary schedule currently at step eight, but it also includes an additional $2.16 because apart, after you get past step eight, it's an 8 cents every single year. So I wanted to kind of reorient you as far as why that says 1670 for somebody working 35 years. As you see, you see the $2 increase moving for the remainder of this calendar year. And then you see the additional dollar increase. So that Person A would start off at 1970. If you include the additional retention differential, and Lyle, if I did my math wrong, please chime in here. The retention differential, it would be additional $4 that this person would have as well. And so starting next year, so not a year from now, but starting next year, this individual will make 2370. And that's still without some of the other pieces that, again, you know, we add in just as far as, you know, work and other things that we have from a faculty standpoint as well. This is just a graph that I know that we discussed at finance. And what it is helping to show, not only for you as you're making your decision, but also from a board standpoint, or excuse me, a community standpoint as well, is where this puts everybody on the salary schedule. So initially, the blue line shows that current hourly rate. Just for tonight, we're coming to you with what the green line would propose. So you see that escalate pretty quickly just today. That's what you're approving today. But I'm walking through the entire plan because I think it's important to have an understanding of what we've tried to do over a comprehensive package. So we talked to you about the retention bonus, the $550 that I believe went out January, one of the, one of the weeks in January. I can't remember, one of the last weeks in January. January 11th? Perfect. January 11th. We did the flexible, the flexible day where we had a number of our employees, most of our employees, specifically our WEA and our, most of our WSP focusing more on our par educators, work from home and be able to participate in a more flexible location day from home and still provide professional development opportunities or just to catch up. As you know, we also introduced, we're gonna do another $550 contract retention bonus for individuals that are sticking and staying with us next year that we will, are working ferociously towards. This kind of stopped us a little bit to make sure that we got this done ferociously towards. So we're looking at something in April that people can know that that payment's gonna go out. But again, this is another piece now in March where we're saying, hey, you know, with all the challenges, what can we do to affect the salary schedule? What can we do to, you know, really make some changes that ultimately help the, I don't want to say people aren't, I don't want to say this because I was gonna say, you know, people thinking about their paycheck because I think if you talk to the individuals here, I don't want to speak for them, but you've talked to many of the par educators and staff that I've talked to, they do it for the kids. This helps. This helps. This helps them not have to think about some other things or may not, maybe also not necessarily have to work that second job or that third job. So with what you see there, the green is what you're approving tonight. The orange is if we, again, we'll come back to you again with a dollar increase on the 2022, 2023 school year and the retention increase as well. And so that's why you see that faraway dot because that goes back to an individual that has significant experience in the district, has been in the district for a long time.
Just another component of this is this year with the $2, they do not take their step for the rest of the year. That comes next year. So they'll get, stay on the step they're on with the $2 adjustment. And then next year, they'll take their step and get the $1 and the adjustment to the new longevity schedule.
Can you show the steps again, real quick?
And we use that term next year, you mean July 1?
Correct.
Most of them don't work in the fall when school resumes in August.
So most of our 188 employees, our par educators, will actually get their first paycheck in September, including our teachers as well.
Thank you.
So skipping, or not taking the step, but getting the $2 an hour, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, so if you're, to Michael's point, that's an important point. And that's the part where it's confusing, but we have to have those conversations to make sure that we're moving people correctly up the salary schedule as well. But if you have an individual that's starting this year at 1323 with no experience, they would immediately in March 11th payroll get 1523. Michael's point is they would not stay on step one. And so even though it's a dollar increase, it actually moved to that 1641 step. Again, this is without any type of retention bonus, longevity differential, differential pay for position or education. So these numbers still don't have some of the other 25, 45 cents, 65 cent differentials that are important in that pay as well. And so while I'm showing this to the board and the community as well, I want to make sure that you have that understanding. There's some additional pieces that we do pay out because it's not a clear apples-to-apples comparison. It was just important to share with you this way so it's as clear as possible as we're trying to explain it moving forward. So on the graph there, the orange, how's that put us into comparing to other districts? So that's the, that's the part, as you know, from the competitive point, I'm really excited about. So, you know, I know that there's been a lot of, you know, at times commentary, feedback that we've heard as far as, okay, what Cedar Rapids doing? What is Council Bluffs, Michael, or Sioux City Council Bluffs doing? I mean, we were paying attention to those new articles, news articles. And I know that there is a number of our employees that are paying attention to those news articles as well. What this does is it not only seeks to match some of those things that were, you know, particularly negotiated or discussed as a supplemental pay, we're trying to, we're trying to blow it out of the water. And I think what we've, what we've done is, which again is maybe a little bit different from other districts, is, and you have it in your talking points as well, we're looking at a 10-year sustainable model. You know, whenever we talk about changing pay, you know, I know that the individual employee may look at as far as, okay, this is either 50 or I know that the individual employee may look at as far as, okay, this is either fifty or a hundred dollars on Mike's paycheck, but Michael and I have to look at it from a greater scope to say, this is um, you know, for the WSP group in particular, we're talking about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And for Ask Me, we're talking about three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in total. So we have to pay attention to that, especially as we're continuing, and that's just for the two dollar increase for the remainder of the year. So we want to make sure we're paying attention to, again, how we're adding more dollars over on the budget overall and how that extrapolates out another ten years to make sure we're not doing anything drastic with our employees. Jane, Michael and I re-review, or more Jane and Michael from that standpoint, they review the budget annually just to make sure that we're in keeping with all those staff considerations because that is a majority of our budget. Um, but it is still important to make sure that whatever we're doing, we can project out that amount of time so people have some reassurance that, you know, this is something that the district is gonna stick and stay with.
So let me make sure I understand this. Um, so the fifty cents for every four years is what they're getting now? For every four years that they have?
Currently, what they're getting is eight cents, and that's after step eight. So they're getting eight cents.
Like you're, so that you're not giving just fifty cents to everybody? If they've worked their, the twelve years or whatever, they're gonna get a dollar fifty, is that what that means?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's important that we were focusing on individuals that are stuck and stay with us through this district or through the district, and so that's a part where, you're right, you're spot on with that. That's a dollar fifty.
So also then, does that mean in four years, there'll be another fifty cents? I mean, will this continue or is this just for now or?
Yeah, we, we plan on, I mean, this is a, we're looking at it continuing. So we're adding this on. Now, I know we're having a supplemental pay conversation, and this is important to note because this can take place out of negotiations process. Um, it's something that we're presenting you through the district tonight. That does not mean that we're not going back and talking about how this actually um adds or will be added to the contract.
And I do think some of the questions that we're asking are going to be answered in some, the, when you get to the examples of the teachers and some of those extra slides. Do you wanna?
Yeah, not necessarily the teachers.
The, well, the, go ahead.
Which, which slide are you talking about, Jane?
The teacher example, A, B, C.
Oh, A, B, C, D, yeah.
Some, some, this might help, Stacy.
Yeah, this might help you look at it kind of again where we're looking at person A, thirty-five years, um, person B, fifteen years and five years, and how they move up from a dollar amount.
Yeah, no, I got, I just meant, it does this, you know, continue so that in four years.
It will continue moving forward.
Thank you.
Well, I think this proposal is right on target, and I commend all those that worked.
Oh, one, one second. I just, I didn't want to figure it out about a group, and they'll hate me that I did because I know I got a couple emails about it. Uh, not hate me, but they'll, they'll.
You might hear it.
Ask me. So this is important that we're, we are looking at combining it just because of some uh same feedback as far as that. And so while we don't have as articulated a plan and um this isn't anybody's fault, um, Robin's been out and, and I talked to her today, and she's currently negotiating about twenty-one contracts across the state. She's been busy. We just haven't had the same level of dialogue, but she's super supportive of this. We've had the same number of meetings, the same type of feedback, and so we will do a two dollar increase for Ask Me as well. Um, the reason why, and I hesitated, uh-oh, I thought I locked it. Um, I hesitated um adding this on there, and now I can't seem to pull this up. Oh, there we go. Um, was, I had, I hesitated because Jane and I talked about, do I add this slide? Do I not add this slide? It's a little confusing and different than kind of the, the scattergram that we put forth for the WSP, but it is there to show you how it will increase immediately. And so you see the blue dots is the current hourly rate, and you see the orange dots. And so you'll see, um, if you're looking closely enough, and I know it may be tougher to people in the back, but there's just additional, you have different levels of our Ask Me groups where you have food services part-time and you have um custodians that um some are two sixty and some are not. And so because of that, it looks a little bit more disjointed than what I showed you before. So I wanted to make sure you saw that also from your um information advantage point. So, sorry, Lyle, go.
Oh, go ahead, Lyle. I was gonna say, can you clarify that the years? I don't know if people can read it at the bottom. The year of experience is at the bottom on this one, and the hourly is on the side.
Yep.
Just so, just so there is no, no misunderstanding that that's not forty-five or fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah, and that's, and that's also something that from my vantage point, we wanted to see it that way because it makes more sense for us to look at it when talking about Ask Me this way because our, long story short, our WSP um folks are paid more on a, even though they're hourly workers, are paid more on a contractual basis, are paid on a monthly um rate compared to our Ask Me employees that are paid as they go on our hourly standpoint. So I need to see it this way, and that may have missed up why, how the graph looked, but I, I appreciate you pointing that out.
So how do, how will this affect part-time employees in all the groups?
Every single person will get this increase.
Okay, and will it be the same for like the, the bonuses and that stuff too or?
Uh, I can't really, as far as the um five hundred and fifty dollar bonus.
Yeah.
We still have yet to decipher those details as far as what that looks like for part-time and full-time.
Right.
Um, but we'll get that information out here in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome.
But for the, the earlier bonus pay, which is not what we're talking, this is not bonus pay, this is hourly pay, but I believe you're talking about the bonus that came in January. We did not um differentiate between part-time and full-time.
Okay.
So um I know some districts did it whatever percent, if you worked fifty percent, you got fifty percent of the bonus or some, and if you worked seventy-five percent, you got seventy-five percent. We did not do that. So we just thought a person is a person, and so we did it that way. But I'm not, you know, uh, every district did it a little bit different, so.
Well, and I would say that I also like, Lyle, commend this, but what I like is we are rewarding longevity. And you know, these, these kids are very, are these, these um pairs are very important in students' lives, and if they stay continuous and constant with the kid, I, I think that only works for a better education and a better relationship. So I, I really appreciate the longevity point. And then also, just as a recruiting tool, could you tell about the insurance benefits they get too for anyone listening that might um, um, consider this position?
No, one of the cool things that we do as a district is um you come to us day one, your insurance starts. And I think for many of the people that I know work on the DIAS right now, that isn't happening in your, in your world at all. And so that's, that's an awesome benefit that we have. We also have a free clinic. Um, for most of our employees, the only employees that don't have that benefit is our HSA, and they pay a significantly reduced rate of thirty-nine ninety-nine. You can't, you can't get that benefit anywhere else. You go to urgent care right now, it's about a hundred dollars to a hundred fifty dollar charge. Um, you know, if you just have the sniffles. So we have um, we have just amazing piece from an insurance standpoint, but I, we're gonna highlight that at a couple of our upcoming career fairies to say again, starting day one, you have these insurance benefits, you have an employee clinic. The wellness opportunity is that we even have yet to roll out this year. Um, it's been a really awesome ride the last couple of years, and this is again just another um, another sprinkle as far as what we're trying to do for staff.
Plus now you have the pay too.
Absolutely.
So that's awesome.
Um, this is, this is game-changing. Um, and to everybody who is involved, thank you. This will truly impact lives in a way that it's hard to even think about, you know. So um, thank you for listening to everybody and for making this happen, to everyone who made it happen.
And I want to give a little bit of credit too. I know, Jody, I think she's sitting in the back. One of the things that happened at the focus groups that's really cool about our staff, and again, I have a, just a hu- huge admiration for them. Um, even though we can't talk about pay um during our focus groups because it's a negotiated item, um, again, most of the, the conversation that we had with WSP was about feedback. It wasn't negotiation, it was just about, here's our proposal, what is your feedback? And we will have negotiations later. Um, but every single um individual um listed as a priority. So even though we couldn't um move forward with that as far as a focus group recommendation, it being a negotiated topic, uh, we had individuals from the teachers, uh, we had individuals from Ask Me be very supportive of wanting to um have more pay for pairs. They understood the importance of it and how much they are, are valued to our classroom. And so that was really cool, and that's kind of one of those secret things that you would never know um until I send the focus group recommendations out to y'all because I made that note. Um, but again, it just speaks to the collegiality of our staff, the, the understanding that, you know, it's, it's not just the individual, it's about the group and how we as a collective body can, can do more for Waterloo Schools and do more for our kids. And so just wanted to leave you with that quick note because that was, that was really awesome, that every single group, and we split up into three different breakout groups, brought back, that is their number one issue. Um, and again, we couldn't talk about it any more than that, but I said that I would bring it to the attention of Dr. Lindeman, um, and obviously I'm just bringing it to the attention of you tonight.
And that's what I wanted to comment on is that it's not just good for people, which it is, but up here we have our mission statement.
That's right.
And I would submit to accomplish the mission statement. From a tactical matter, we need to cast a wide net. We need to be able to land and retain our best fit staff. And uh, it, so this proposal underscores the fact that uh all of our staff, not just the WA, but Ask Me and WSEP as well, are mission critical. And so that's what, to me, this is really about, it's about two things. It's about people, but it's also about better accomplishing that mission. So I think it's uh, it's really on target for those reasons. Anybody else? Thank you very much, and I think we're all very supportive of it. So all in favor of um approving the supplemental pay proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, chair bow tie, carry seven zero. Thank you very much, and this is exciting. Yeah. Okay, now we will move on, and that will be to item.
I'm sorry, no, for real, like, yeah.
Item L, which is the technology purchase, and I see Mr. O'Brien back there. And um, why won't this go up here? Sorry, technological problem on me. Um, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the supplemental, oh, I'm sorry. My, it did, it slipped back to that. Okay, sorry. It really is a technological problem here, Matt. And, and get these Chromebooks, sorry, sorry, because I'm having a problem. Okay, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of two thousand two hundred and twenty-five Chromebooks, two thousand two hundred and twenty-five Google education upgrade licenses, and three hundred laptops from Dell at a cost totally of seven hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, and one thousand seven hundred and fifty carrying cases from CDWG at a total cost of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and discussion, please.
Well, many of you are probably used to me coming before you in the springtime uh for a major technology purchase. Every year we do a refresh in the spring that we phase in over the summer. Um, it's not spring yet, though this year I did want to come to you um early. Uh, supply chain, you, Travis alluded to earlier, and obviously that's a um, a concern for us as well. So um, I'm asking for the approval of the package earlier than normal this year so we can get those orders in and hopefully get all of our equipment in in time to work and prepare for that rollout over the summer as we typically would. So um, this is a, a typical package that we would bring to you yearly, but a little bit atypical timing just because of the supply chain challenges and whatnot that we find ourselves with. So um, as I mentioned, we do have a lifecycle replacement um model where every year we're replacing computers, devices that are due for replacement. So there's a couple of parts to that. There's the student device uh section of that. So every year we purchase for incoming sixth and eighth, uh, excuse me, incoming sixth and ninth graders uh as they're entering middle school and high school. So that's both on the Chromebook side as well as on the carrying case side. So that's a purchase those of you have been on the board for a little while or are used to seeing on a yearly basis. Um, we also, on the student side this year, are purchasing Chromebooks for Lou Henry, which is our elementary school that is due for replacement of their student devices. So again, uh, part of our normal cycle there. On the staff side, similarly, we have a, a cycle for laptops. So the vast majority of the three hundred laptops that are part of this proposal are for our high schools, for our teachers and other staff at our high schools. Um, we do have a, a small number of those that additionally will go to support staff at various other buildings and administrators at various other buildings as well, but the bulk of the three hundred is for our three high schools. Um, the final piece that I would just note before I would open up for questions is, is I'm actually really excited with the proposal in front of you from a pricing perspective. Um, we all know that inflation, supply challenges has been a very real thing, and the per unit cost of all of these items are actually the same or lower um than they were last year after quite a bit of work with our vendors. So um, while the final price tag that number, that seven hundred and forty-four thousand is obviously a large number, um, I really do feel like we're getting a, a good bang for our buck in terms of the number of devices that we're getting uh for that money.
Weren't they two twenty-five? Or is the, the one ninety-nine ones, weren't they two twenty-five last year?
Um, they were, so they did come down in price. It's, it's a little slightly misleading because the Chromebook, there's actually two costs of that. There's the hardware cost, and then there's the license cost. So all of our hardware costs actually went down, the license cost, which I itemized separately, that actually went up. Um, so it's not, I, I just want to be fair and say it's not apples to apples. Um, I think the actual hardware cost last year of that, that normal Chromebook was two oh five. Um, so it did come down, just not as that, that much. But honestly, I was, I was thrilled just to get stable pricing, let alone actually being able to get per unit cost down, so.
Well, yeah, five dollars times.
Yeah, when you multiply that out, that's, that's, that's a good statement for sure.
So we're saying that device life is about three years then, three to four years, four years then?
So Chromebooks, we typically have a four-year device span except for middle school. It just works out, you know, three years at middle school, four years at, at um high schools, what we replace Chromebooks. Laptops, Windows laptops, we typically do up to a five-year lifespan. So the bulk of laptops that we're replacing are actually at five years old.
So we keep those, so if we swap out the about eight hundred units at middle school for a great year?
Correct.
Do we keep those to help supplement because they probably have under your life in there?
Yep, you're, those are absolutely, so that, that's a good question. Let's kind of touch on what happens to, to tech when, when they're decommissioned because in many cases it, we don't actually get rid of technology until it's truly dead, dead or it's obsolete in terms of it's no longer receiving updates from the manufacturer. So we do a couple of things. One is in some cases, we'll actually tear down those units, and I'm speaking both with the Chromebooks that you mentioned, but also laptops, other devices as well. It's, it's a very similar pro- process. So in some cases, um, we may tear those down and actually use them for parts. So like LCD screens, keyboards, those type of things. Um, that's a fairly typical piece for us as well, so we can buy fewer parts once the units age, you know, get past the warranty cycle or are getting older and, and age, that type of thing. In other cases, we actually do use those in production either. Um, as you said, Jesse, sometimes to supplement, um, we're actually gonna be fortunate next year that at our secondary level with this purchase, we'll actually be one model across the board, which is gonna make kind of that interchangeability quite a bit easier. That's normally not the case, that just from a timing perspective, this is probably the only time in the next three years that will be the case. But either way, we have parts of spares and whatnot that we use those for. Um, we also use them for other miscellaneous purposes, so just to throw a few out there. Um, like when we've had to do a quick pivot to, to a potential work from home and we needed additional devices for expo students or even for staff members um that have desktop computers, and we've had those older Chromebooks available to meet those purposes. Um, stuff such as homeschool students that need to come in and take ISAS exams with us. Um, you know, other scenarios like that, having additional um devices on hand for ISAS, those type of things. So um typically, even when we retire them, they're not actually truly retired, retired for another one to two years after that.
Are they as durable as just a, a regular laptop then, Chromebooks?
Um.
I just think, I, I usually keep my laptops longer than three to four years, you know.
You're also not a Miller High schooler, I'd say. So they, they really are, in, in some ways, yes, in that um, so Chromebooks, they're simpler devices. So your laptop has more parts in it than uh, you know, it probably has multiple daughter boards. Um, most laptops don't have spinning hard drives any longer, but you know, everything's solid-state. It's, it's a, a simpler device with fewer parts. So from that perspective, fewer things that can break, um, that increases the durability. On the, the flip side, there's ob- obviously a costing, you know, it's a, it's a lower-cost device, and you know, with a lower-cost device, oftentimes, as much as a manufacturer advertises a Chromebook to be a rugged device, they are in some ways, other ways, you know, plastics can only survive so much of a fall type of thing or other pieces. So um, I would say the typical lifespan for most districts with Chromebooks is, is right in that three to four-year range from what other districts were certainly not atypical with what other districts are expecting from their students.
Are you surprised at the fact it's decreasing? Is this, is the hardware costs and technology actually still on a downturn? Or are these maybe no longer state-of-the, our Chromebooks maybe no longer state-of-the-art and don't command the price they used to?
and don't command the price they used to?
Both, Lyle. Well, so I would say the first statement was true up until probably last year. This, this year, with supply chain, chip shortages, et cetera, that probably is no longer the case. And, and Lyle, you're exactly right. You note that these are actually the same models that we purchased last year. So in the spectrum of the, the model's lifespan, and I'm actually speaking both the Chromebook and the laptop, these are not at the very beginning part of the lifespan. They're at the tail end of the spectrum, but they're still current devices. The Chromebooks, for example, still have another five years of updates coming from Google, which kind of meets our criteria of four years' usage plus one additional year for those other purposes that I mentioned. So they're still current models, they're just not the state-of-the-art models. But quite honestly, had we gone with the brand-new models that are just now being released, we likely wouldn't see those this summer, and the price would have been substantially more. And I don't think I would be able to stand before you and say that it was worth the cost increase, because really, other than a slightly newer chipset, and there, there's not that much difference with the newer models that are coming out compared to what we're, what we're looking for in terms of capability.
By the way, do you have any invitation to come to us at every meeting with good news?
I'll, I'll work on that.
And I was wondering, Matt, as far as the Chromebook, the covers, okay? The carrying cases, have they not had that previously at the secondary level? Is this a new, or have they always had them at the secondary level?
They, they've always had some sort of case. We've kind of gone back and forth on different styles of cases. This, just for simplicity's sake, is the same case model that we purchased last year. Typically, at the middle school level, they're more, the, the buildings are more apt to insist that the students use those. By the time they're at the high school level, we give them to each student so they're issued that case. It's, it's often left more to the student's discretion whether they use those cases or not.
Are these the ones that they stay in and it-
Yeah, it's the stay-in cases, which the, the students don't necessarily love. In a lot of cases, the feedback we've gotten from staff has been that they really, particularly at the middle school level, have appreciated that style case.
I have a quick question about your vendor. You had mentioned that you are using the same as last year?
Correct.
Okay. Is it typical to kind of throw out a bid to a different vendor? Or you're just kind of like, I'm just happy with this one, we're not going to change?
Yeah, so it's a good question, and for us, it's really dependent on the pricing that we've gotten. We really try to look at the total cost of ownership, and part of the total cost of ownership does involve some simplification. In other words, trying to standardize, make sure that we're meeting both our students' staff needs while also standardizing on certain models of devices so that we're able to have our tech certified with. So for example, a number of our techs are certified with Dell so they can directly order parts, they don't have to go through warranty repair. Had we gone with a different model, those are obviously additional complexities that aren't necessarily a cost that would be reflected in what's before you, but still would be caught, like, operational cost for us as well. So the way I typically approach it is if we're able to standardize pieces, that's definitely a piece of the puzzle. Now that said, had Dell come back and given us obnoxious pricing, which was the avenue that I was afraid that we were going to go down, I would absolutely not come before you with that. Then we would, you know, factor that in of, well, it ma, it makes sense for us to entertain multiple models, knowing that we would want to factor in those other costs that are part of that, but also if the per-unit cost is going to be substantially more, then it's probably worth those kind of internal costs to, to, to switch to a different model. In this case, we were fortunate that we were able to get some great pricing and, and stick with a manufacturer that we're already familiar with.
Thank you.
You bet.
This would sound really dumb.
That's okay.
Okay, so I thought that Chromebooks were, like, it's, it's a, it was a Microsoft product, wasn't it? Or, and then it became like, is it just like a generic?
No, so, so Chromebook is actually by, by Google. So a Chromebook is really, so a Chromebook is just a type of laptop that often refers to, often, but not always with Chrome, with Chromebooks, the laptop itself might have a little bit lower end in terms of its specifications, because instead of running Microsoft Windows, it's running Chrome, running Chrome OS, which is Google's operating system. Google actually has two, both Android and Chrome OS. So the reason why it can run basically with lower specs or like with lower hardware, like in other words, not as fast of a processor or things of that nature, is because the operating system isn't as taxing as Microsoft Windows is. So a Chrome OS is really built for management, and then it's built to leverage the power of the internet. So it's basically, you can have apps, but it's mainly the, the Chrome web browser in an operating system, which as more and more things have become cloud-based, that's really all that we require for, for our students and quite honestly, for a good chunk of our staff as well.
I just, I didn't know Dell made, I don't know what it, anything.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. A lot of manufacturers have, have gotten into that game now. So there's probably a dozen or so, pretty much all of the typical manufacturers outside of, of course, Apple.
Right.
But all the others have pretty much made some sort of model of Chromebook now.
With the, the ones for Lou Henry, I know we, we talked about this last year. Are we, we're moving all elementary heavy in touch now, right?
We are, we're slowly moving in that direction, yes. As the replacement cycle comes up, then yes, we're moving towards touch.
So are we only using iPads for, is it pre-K and K? Or are we just not using them at all anymore?
We're still using them for pre-K. Lou Henry, then like Lowell will be our second elementary that will use touch Chromebooks across the board. So basically, when we start one-to-one, then they're starting with Chromebooks, because at pre-K, they're just, you know, a handful per classroom. It's more center-based. So once we start one-to-one, then kind of the new model we're moving towards right now is touch Chromebook for elementary, starting at kindergarten.
And stuff, these don't go home with them, right? At, at elementary?
I don't believe they go home with them yet. At elementary, in some cases, they do for different things.
And, and generally, they don't. Virtual, obviously, they're home. Otherwise, we have given our, our buildings some flexibility, where if there's special circumstances, or like ELL has had virtual field trips for the family, things of that nature, then our schools have the flexibility to check them home. We've given not enough cases for all of the devices, but enough that they can check those out. But as a normal practice, they're staying in the classroom at night in a cart.
Right, I'm glad the flexibility is, I thank you.
Okay, any more questions on that? All right, all in favor of approving the, I guess, 225 Chromebooks? All the technology approvals? Please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried seven zero.
And he's got a whole other technology, so there's going to be more good news, right?
Hopefully, it's seen as good news. You notice I brought my water up, I figured I'd be up here for a little while.
Right, now we will move on to the next exhibit, Exhibit M. And this will be Mr. O'Brien also. And it is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Promethium, Prometh- I can't say it. Promethian, I said it wrong. Active panels and stands from CDWG at a total cost of $889,525. And the installation of said active panels by Communications Engineering Company at a cost of $98,362.12. So moved.
Second.
And discussion again with Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, so the standard classroom, even though we're one-to-one for most of our classrooms, really, it is an expectation that there's an interactive display of some type in, at the center of each of our classrooms, at the center of each classroom. That's been standard for us for quite some time and is, is really standard across the nation, across most schools as well. We in the wireless schools, for those that have been around for a little while, are aware that we actually started installing Promethian active boards 13 years ago now, in the summer of 2008. So the proposal before you is to replace those boards, which are now 13 years old, and quite honestly, well past due for replacement. We are having more and more difficulties just supporting those, getting those to work with modern computers. So this is from, quite honestly, in addition to the educational benefits, just from a technology infrastructure perspective, this is becoming a necessity just to be able to continue to support these.
What do we do with the aged-out ones? Throw them in a dumpster? Is there a resale value for them?
Yeah, they're, at 13 years old, there really isn't. So there's actually a few different components of them. The projectors, we, the projectors in a world, not all, in most cases, are not 13 years old. So we have been salvaging the projectors, reusing lamps, and those that have still been within the district, that type of thing. So the projectors do have a little value, and we're still using those. The boards themselves really don't have value any longer. That actually part of the contract before you tonight is the, the contractor will be responsible for recycling that. So there's a big, there's a, it consists mainly outside the projector, there's a, a board and a big metal stand with a lot of metal and counterweight. So the stand itself is metal that the contractor will be responsible for recycling as part of that disposal or the removal process that's before you.
Is 13 years a long time to keep?
I mean, it, it is, I would say, past its, well past its lifespan at this point. And we did start, as many of the boarders are aware, we started the replacement cycle of these actually several years ago. So we're, we're through with all of our secondary schools with the exception of Central, because obviously, Central has some construction projects coming on. And that is actually, the replacements for Central is part of this proposal. So the proposal before you actually is to replace half of our elementaries. Those with the oldest active boards are the ones that we chose, obviously, to go first. The idea being that we'll bring back to you around this time next year the other half for a proposal for that replacement to be the following summer. But this year's proposal, then, also, again, because of supply chains, I wanted to make sure that we had the ability to get the orders in for the WCC expansion, which will be temporarily occupied by Central, early enough that we don't end up with difficulties like we had with Lowell in terms of getting those in. So that's actually part of the proposal in front of you as well.
If you don't get them in this summer, can you still put them in, or no? Like during Christmas break or something?
It would probably be difficult to do all five elementaries yet this year if they didn't come in just because of contractor availability and even working with contractors to get bids. I think that we could probably get a couple of done between non-school days. I, I mean, certainly, we could look at a higher money spend and do, you know, second shift work or something along those lines. That's also an option. But if we were wanting to stick with just kind of the base cost in terms of labor from a contractor, then it would be likely difficult to get all, all five done, like, just through a Christmas break.
Just out of curiosity, do you have, do we have contractors install all of them?
We did. This is actually the first year that you've seen that as part of the proposal, though. Last year, we did a little bit more of that work in-house. We actually did outsource it, part of the work, the installation work, but it was under the threshold for pre-rule for the boards that would have come before you as part of the bill-to-do payable, but not as a separate action item. This year, because we're actually expanded, we expanded the scope in terms of what we're asking the contractors to do, but it's also more complex installation, because these are the adjustable height boards. So the mounts are basically, it takes more to install them. So because of that, it's over the threshold that requires board approval. But that's probably why you didn't see it, or weren't used to seeing that. That maybe was a little odd compared to the past.
So is this being funded through Pepper or Esser or?
Esser.
Esser. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for, thank you again, Mr. O'Brien. You're always very insightful. So all in favor of approving the Promethian active panels? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, carried seven zero. Thank you very much. Get ordering now, Matt, okay? All right, our next exhibit is Exhibit N, and it is regarding our policies. And this is, the superintendent is recommending that the Board approve the following policies: meetings of the Board of Education, video camera supervision and viewing, and care, maintenance, and disposal of school district records. So moved.
Second.
And we are having our Board Secretary, Ms. Pam Arndorfer, discuss this. So is it okay if she stays here, or do you guys want her to go down there? Stay here would be good with me, okay. Thank you, go ahead, Ms. Arndorfer.
Thank you. So formal. Okay, so these policies were presented for first reading a couple of weeks ago. They're all, I'm pretty, pretty basic. I know a couple of them were just cleaning it up, sticking with the IASB verbiage on there. So if anybody has questions, I can answer them, or otherwise, we can move ahead.
Yeah, I guess I missed this last time, but what we're seeing is virtual meetings are no longer allowed.
No, what we're saying is, is we can meet virtually. We just took that section out of there, because that's kind of the way of, it really doesn't need to be part of the policy, because we'll meet virtually if we need to meet virtually.
Read the first line on that page, Lyle. It, it already says we can meet electronically.
Yeah.
So it didn't need to be differentiated.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, that was an easy one for you tonight. So all in favor of approving those three policies? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion has carried seven zero. Thank you. Okay, then we are going to move on to Exhibit O. And this will be, Michael Coughlin will be presenting. And I'm going to get this on the table, maybe.
Oh, thank you.
It's not working.
Make it tight.
Okay, thank you, Pam. I am sorry, we will, there we go, it's moving now. I apologize, here it's working again. Okay. Okay, we will be looking at the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education approve the budget expenditure estimate and the levy, tax levy rate for publication, and set the public hearing for the 2223 certified budget at 5:00 PM on April 11, 2022.
So moved.
Second. And we have packets and a presentation, and we will get all of our questions answered by Mr. Coughlin.
Yeah, they called, went on my way here. I started sending out, no mask on buses.
Thank you for your patience.
No masks on buses.
There we go. There we go.
I think this is about the 14th time you've seen this screen, if you've been, maybe just Lyle, is the only one. But we are on a little bit different schedule this year. We are still under the schedule that it has to be approved and delivered to the county auditor by April 15. But with the timing of publishing and bringing things to the board without the March 14 meeting, this is the only meeting that works for that unless there's a special one. But it didn't, it didn't really matter to go a little bit early. But we're a couple of weeks earlier than we are normally. So I do want to preface it with a couple of statements of saying the Finance Committee has reviewed this to a point, because there are some things I did not know by the time when we had the Finance Committee. There's still some things I don't know, depending on what the legislature may do. But I believe there's enough information and enough-
Um, but I believe there's enough information, um, and enough, um, calculations in what's going forward with this that we can go forward and, um, consider a tax rate and, um, the total spending for the whole budget, not just the general fund. It's all the funds, um, that are involved on this single page that I give you. But if you're looking at comparisons, it is line thirty-six on this single page. When you look at what we did actual in twenty-one on the far right, a reestimation, um, for twenty-two, and then a new number for twenty-three. Um, and being only in February, that reestimation for twenty-two is probably still a little conservative, but it does not affect any of the calculations that you're going to be considering tonight. Um, when you look at the percentage numbers on this far right side, um, because these are the sections, um, if you look at the, um, expenditures on the second half, the lower half, there's four categories, instruction, total support services, which are above, um, that line on thirty-one A, uh, then non-instructional programs, and that's pretty much food service, and, um, I'm looking at the wrong line. Yeah, it's pretty much food service. There is a little sprinkling, uh, in the general fund, but not substantial. Um, and then other, other expenditures, and that's where you see a twenty-nine percent increase. But that's the conservative issue of not knowing within the next eighteen months where we're going to be on construction projects, whether, uh, Central, WCC may move ahead quicker than we're anticipating. And we have not, um, been able to calculate any certainty of, um, the insurance claim on Lowell. So all of those things come into place as far as presenting a conservative budget because, as you know, once we post and approve, uh, on April eleventh, you can reduce it, but you can't raise it. So these numbers are always, um, a little bit, uh, of an educated guess, that's what budgets always are. Um, but we'll be able to deal with that, um, later if we don't spend that. It's not harm or foul, it doesn't change the tax rate either way. Um, so we will just review what, uh, we normally go through in a year.
Real quick, so will you put a number in for line thirty-three for the construction before April eleventh, or that will stay zero?
We won't know by then.
Okay.
Um, it's just something that will happen as we get into the next school year and all the planning with Facility Committee. And it's really, the plans already have been done, it's just how fast is it going to move?
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Um, and I did have, uh, a meeting with, um, a couple of board members, newer, newer board members, uh, just before the meeting tonight, and, um, there's a lot of components in this. Some of you have heard this presentation many times, and some of you are the first time. Um, and I, just one thought that occurred to me after we met is, the purpose of this meeting is just to establish the revenue that we will, um, claim, um, and that the formula drives based on our student enrollment and what budget we can build through the authority that the formula gives us. It's not, how are we going to spend that money? It's not saying, I like this project or this one, and I want to make sure, um, we're, we're addressing staffing, we're addressing, those decisions are beyond this. This is just establishing the, the budget that we will have to use. And it really is, um, a different situation where any private business, um, a lot of , uh, public businesses as well, and nonprofits, and, um, most people do not know what revenue they're going to have for the next year. We do. None of these, all of these numbers on here are pretty much guaranteed. A grant may come in a little less than what we expected, but overall, you're looking at, I would say, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent certainty that these are the numbers we're going to be using. So it's not a, it's not a, uh, exercise of going out and generating your revenue. That part is pretty much done by formula, by the number of kids we have, by what the legislature does. Our, um, purpose and, uh, the job that we have with this is to manage the money we have. Um, and I'll say, when it was asked about, um, Matt's technology, uh, where is that coming out of? And it will probably be the majority of ESER, unless it fits in some other areas that can use it. We have some grants that you can use with technology. So that will be part of the managing of it, and that's what we do every day. It's not just, um, fill in the blanks and see where it comes, we have to plan and manage the money that we have. Okay, so let's get into this, I'm not too long-winded, you've been here for a while So the school district funds, I guess I have to get on the right page. So we have three different types of accounts. Um, the general fund, the management fund, and the PEPL, physical plant and equipment levy, are all supported by property tax. General fund is state aid as well. But we are talking primarily about property tax tonight because that's what is, uh, published to the, um, general public of what our rate estimate will be, and then it will go to the April eleventh meeting to finalize it. Um, the sales tax, thirty-three and forty, both, uh, are funded by the one cent sales tax, and thirty-three and forty work in combination, in partnership, they're both using the same money. The penny money comes in, it goes into the thirty-three fund, the save fund, and if we, um, need to, and we do, make bond payments and interest payments, then we have to transfer money out of thirty-three into forty to make that payment, but it's the same dollars. And then the third type of category we have, um, and I just called it self-funded because they generate, uh, money not from any kind of tax. It is student activity, uh, and the lunch fund that, um, is coming from state and federal reimbursement, since we have all of the buildings on free lunch. And, um, the only miscellaneous to that is if the, if the students are eating à la carte, then we have cash flow on that, but that's minor compared to, um, the rest of the program.
I forgot to ask this, Michael, when we were going through it, but how much is, does the save usually bring in every year? Do you?
Save?
Yeah.
About twelve million.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been, it's been going up from about ten million about three years ago, and we should get close to twelve million this year. And that's really a good question to, um, just have a focus on, because when the pandemic hit, a lot of people thought the state economy was going to crash, and save money might take a really hard hit. Um, but it has come to be as financial advisor, Tim Oswald, uh, and I talked about that quite a bit when it happened, and he said, you know, we go back to two thousand nine when we had the housing crash, and we didn't see a dip at all. And he said, the reason why is Iowa is an agricultural state. The ground didn't go away, they're going to keep doing it. Um, so he just said, if there's a change, it will be slow and won't be as much as some other areas. And that has proven to come true. We're still going forward, even at a faster pace than they were thinking it would have gone, so. So we have components of the budget, the general fund budget, that it's based entirely on enrollment, um, and this is just the history of the enrollment figures, and your, uh, legend at the bottom of the page means the count was taken in October of that year, but it applies to the budget year on the bottom. So when we took enrollment in October of twenty-one, which was just last fall, that applies to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Our financial indicators, and this is a, uh, estimate on where we're going to end up at the end of this school year, and we're seeing all of those numbers coming together. And that's because of the progress we've made through managing the ESER funds. Uh, one of the comments on the presentation on the WSP hourly increase, um, part of that whole process was not to just take one group and say, let's do this, and not know how it's going to affect the whole budget for how many years. Um, we have tested other groups because that may be another possibility, but all of that has to be cleared in, in forecasting that, for it to be safe to consider that, and that has been done. And, um, I'm very confident that what we've done and planned to this point is sustainable for ten years, and that's what Kingsley. Um, and then I go back to the managing thing, that between now and ten years from now, every administrator that sits in the responsibility and the boards of the budget are going to be managing the budget every single year. So yes, there may be some changes when ESER or the ESER balance runs out, but we're going to be working on that for ten years. It's not going to be a cliff. So the other factor to the general fund budget is the state cost per pupil. Um, last year for twenty, say, this year for twenty-one, twenty-two, it was seven thousand two twenty-seven. It was increased by two and a half percent, so you add two and a half percent to that seven thousand figure, and that's a hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then there's the equity impact because some of, some districts had a higher amount than seven thousand two twenty-seven. So the legislature's been bringing that back together, so everybody will have the same number. Uh, we've had a couple of years of ten, we've had a couple of years of five dollars, and it's five dollars this year. So this is where that money goes. This is the authority that is generated by that formula. So the main thing, like we've just talked about, is the enrollment number times that state cost per pupil. So ten thousand six hundred and eighty students times, um, seven thousand four hundred and thirteen gives you seventy-nine million dollars. And that's the base of our budget, it's the combined district cost. I was going to refer to it as the CDC, but we're all a little jumpy with that acronym, so, um, that's the base of our budget. So that's why, what's important is how many kids walk through the door. That's why we spend quite an effort trying to count every kid that we're entitled to. So then we have a lot of things that come on top of it, supplementary weighting are like, is like the weighting for ELL. The one point oh part of that student is in the top number, but if they're getting two point two extra, that's where it goes. So that's mostly the ELL, the special needs, that's all the weighting beyond the one point oh for special needs kids, sixteen million dollars. Um, and then we have categoricals that come from the state, and some of it applies to salary, teacher salary supplement, um, teacher quality, professional development, teacher leadership, and, um, class size that we are able to apply to some of the lower grades to be able to have lower class size and hire another teacher, or two, or six, I can't remember exactly what the number is. Then we have the cost for the AEA, five point eight. We have the SBRC authority that you've heard me do many times, of saying you apply to the SBRC for extra enrollment, or more ELL kids, or asbestos abatement, and the School Budget Review Committee awards authority, and then we have to back it by cash with cash reserve. And then the at-risk program is basically expo and several other little programs that go with that. So that seventy-nine million, because of all these supplementary additions, become a hundred and twenty-two million. So again, that's kind of our base budget we work from. So here we start out.
Could you go back one slide, please? The, uh, asbestos line or the SBRC line? How, we don't know much about that at this point in the game, do we?
Well, it is comparing a trend from the last couple of years of saying, what could we be doing? Uh, we were a little higher last year because we claimed, uh, new costs for WCC starting. So we were, we were a million, million and a half higher than that number, but that's not going to happen again to that extent. But this is an estimate. So if that does go up, um, it will be on the next budget year when we're dealing with So with that, a hundred and twenty-two million, um, then you add your carryover balance from the last year, you don't lose that, the instructional support levy, the preschool funding, and then miscellaneous. And that's, uh, got a good chunk of ESER money in it. So now our budget is up to a hundred and ninety-five million for the gen, for, um, the general fund. But there's a lot of components in it. Okay, just, I'm going to try to do this quick because it, it gets kind of cumbersome, but it does give you an idea. Now we know how much money we have to work with. Basically, it's at a hundred and twenty-two million because the rest of it, the, up to the hundred and ninety-five, has specific funding that covers that. So we're back to the hundred and twenty-two million, and then you have to decide, how much is property tax, how much is state aid? That's the next part of the formula. So every district in the state has to levy five dollars and forty cents. Depending on their property value, it may bring in a lot of money, it may bring in little compared to your size, and Waterloo is a property value poor district, so comparative to other districts is going to bring in a lower number. So ours is fifteen million. And then they take, the state takes that number and says, whatever is the difference between that number and eighty-eight point four percent, that went up this year, it was eighty-seven and a half forever, the state fills that in. And that is eighty-seven million for us. So when you get past the eighty-eight point four, it goes back to the taxpayer, the last eleven point six percent, and it's applied to our value, and whatever our rate has to go up. And it's applied to our value and whatever our rate has to go up to capture that dollar amount, that's how the formula works. So that's why you see differences in tax rates across different districts, has a lot to do with what their property value is per student, depending on how much state aid they get and how much property tax they have to have. But one more important component is property tax relief. And when we are a property poor district, we qualify for more property tax relief than many others. So there's three different categories, and at this point, I couldn't go in and explain what all of these mean. I did do that at one time, but I'd have to do a refresher. But following this, we get five-point-six million dollars worth of property tax relief. It doesn't, all it does in that formula is replaces money that would've gone to property tax or to state aid. Now, this is a cumulative amount. So they've been doing, the state has been doing this for several years. So this is the value that it has built up to. But those are individual numbers, and I'm saying that incorrectly. Those numbers are for this year. But when you talk about, you hear about when the legislature discusses saying the amount of money that the Republicans are putting away for tax relief, if Waterloo's getting five-point-five million, I don't know what the number is across the state, that means that money is coming out of the formula, the state is covering that, so it doesn't go to the taxpayer, but the state is taking that burden. So the argument from the other side of the aisle is, well, that would be money they could make two-point-five, three-point-five, or four percent. And that's one of the arguments that are going back and forth. But when you look at that calculation of five point, oh, five-point-six million dollars, one of the reasons that went up this year is because they changed the calculation for the commercial industrial tax replacement, and there isn't any of that anymore. So they've switched it in the formula, but it's still going to, coming out of the state's pocket. So going back to this chart where we were talking about the five dollars and forty cents being fifteen million, and the property tax for the eleven-point-six is seventeen million, that would be thirty-two million roughly that we would have to charge for property tax. But we get a five-point-six million dollar credit, and the state is picking that up and adding it to the eighty-seven million we get for state aid. So now our state aid is ninety-three million, and our property tax is twenty-seven million that we will pass on to the public, that the rate will be based on. So that's what.
So Michael, so the eleven-point-six then would, it's actually lower then, right? Because of the tax reform?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that tax cut is lowering that eleven-point-six. Okay, so that's just something to keep in mind. So let's go back to another component that, that has an effect now on the rate, is the property valuation. So you take the dollar amount you're going to charge, divided by the valuation rate, and that comes up with the property tax rate. So for this year, and it's based always a year or so before, so this was January of twenty-one numbers, and it went up two-point-two percent from the previous year, and you can see it's jumped around quite a bit in the last six years. So, once you put all of this together, you're not looking at twenty-seven million dollars of property tax, because the number I just talked to you about was general fund. But this is all the funds, because there's, there is management. And the other one that gets property tax, I'm going, going on a blank. Pebble, the thirty-three cents of pebble. And, well, cash reserve would be part of general fund, but we're, because of our excessive miscellaneous income, there isn't much for cash reserve this year, two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand. That's a, a formula that we have to follow. So based on the dollar amount, the formula driven, when the finance committee met, I pulled the wrong number out of my memory and was thinking last year was three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents, it was thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. So, and if you remember, last year, we published at fourteen-twenty, which would've been the third year in a row, but we came back because of the influx of ESER, and the board approved reducing that by a million dollars. So that brought us down to thirteen-eighty-five. So there hasn't been a lot of budget change. There was some additional money because of our enrollment going back up, but part of that calculation also included having to pay back the hundred-and-one percent guarantee that we did last year in our authority. So again, there's, there's lots of moving parts with this, but the net result is that it would go to thirteen-thirty-six as a drop of forty-seven cents. And the only thing that we really do have a variable that we don't quite know the impact of it yet is, there's not a lot of things that the board can change in the formula. One of them is cash reserve, but that got taken away this year because of our excess of ESER funds. The other one is the management fund. And we have been creeping up that dollar amount. It costs about a million and a half dollars for property tax, or not property tax, property insurance, liability, and workers' comp. I haven't gotten a firm number on that yet, so I'm, there's a conservative add to that. And there's also legislation that is going on in discussion right now about being able to use some of management fund for teacher incentives, hiring teacher incentive, hard to find teachers. So there is a little bit of flexibility in that and the numbers I presented. But that, again, would fall under that same issue of we can lower it, but we can't raise it. So those are about the only two things that really did have an impact on the rate, because if we would've left management the way that it, what we did last year, the tax rate would've been twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents. So even with adjusting management a little bit because of property tax, property insurance going up, and that's really a hot market right now because of all the things going on in the world. So that's understandable, so there is some cushion put in for that. So getting into the details of this, the general fund rate is nine dollars and seventy-eight cents, and there's that twenty-seven million dollars worth of property tax that we were talking about with the tax, tax relief. Instructional support is all property tax, that was, that's a local decision that it has been going on since nineteen-eighty or eighty-one, I believe.
So is the state officially giving up on funding any of that?
Yeah, they gave up quite a few years ago.
Okay. Cause the original intent was the state was gonna pick up part of that, right?
Yep, they were, because the whole dollar value of instructional support is ten percent of your combined district cost. So the original intent was, in this year, would've been seven-point-nine million dollars rather than four-point-eight, that's how much it has been carved out. It wasn't just the state funding, it was the state establishing a limit. So then they just had to distribute within that until they got to the, until all that money was used up and then it stopped. Management fund is showing that increase of a million dollars over last year because of not knowing what property insurance is going to be. So then you have the board pebble, the thirty-three cents, and the voted pebble of sixty-seven cents, and that's how you come up with the thirteen-thirty-six. And the dollar value of thirty-eight-nine-twenty-six-oh-forty-one.
What is, what is the board pebble versus voted pebble? I mean.
A board, the board by itself can levy thirty-three cents. If they wanna go higher than that, it has to go to the voters.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, and the limit on that is a dollar thirty-four, but we did half, took half of that sixty-seven cent to the voters. And that's what was approved.
And when is that, through twenty, twenty-nine?
No, it's not that long. Might be twenty-seven. So we, I have it written on my wall in my office.
I think it is twenty, twenty-seven, yeah. We just, yeah.
So we usually go to the public two to.
A year or two, yeah, two years.
Two years before is up so that we know our budget.
Yep.
For the next following.
So twenty-five probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mark it on your calendar.
I'll get that online.
Okay, now the application of paying taxes and what does it do for the property owner in Waterloo District? So part of that thirteen-thirty-six is you apply it to the value of your property. And if you have a hundred-thousand-dollar house, you take one hundred, the thousands field, times a percent, but there is a rollback. And here's the categories. The rollback did drop for residential by two points. And multi-residential, it went down roughly two points.
That means the taxes went up, right?
No, the taxes went down. You pay that percentage, not the difference between the one.
All right, got it, thanks.
So what that does, this is just a comparison between the two years, again, just to put them side by side. So getting into the twenty-twenty-one year, when it was thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents, I'm a hundred-thousand-dollar property, that's thirteen-eighty-five, and a resident with a hundred-thousand-dollar home paid seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. And likewise for commercial and multi-residential. If you go to the new proposed rate of thirteen-thirty-six, the rate went down and the rollback went down. Wrong way. So they're going, so a hundred-thousand-dollar home goes from seven-eighty-two to seven-twenty-three. And so on for the other categories. I didn't put, I have put agricultural here on other years, but it's really a hard one to, it's not an apples-to-apples, cause it's by acre. And I don't know how they apply the value of your farm to this rate, so I just left it off. So if we have to go into that further question, I'm going to have to call somebody. So the other part of the board's action tonight is then approving an estimated tax rate. It's not final until April eleventh. We also have to approve an estimated maximum level of spending. So what I've given you on the right-hand side is what we filed last year, two-hundred-and-fourteen million over all of, all of the funds. And this year with the uncertainty of where we're gonna be at at SAVE, going up with the general fund, about five million dollars. So these are some conservative estimates that we should be well within, and raising that from two-fourteen to two-twenty-four.
Michael, why the huge increase in food service?
Because prices are going up.
Right.
You know, that may drive more kids to come and eat at school because it's tough doing it at home. And last year, we just, or in twenty-one, we just barely made the posted budget. So I'm giving myself a little room here, but I don't know if it's really that far out, depending on what costs, costs are going up, so. And again, with this, if we find out even some of these are not high enough, we can amend. We would be doing that in May of next year. And it doesn't do anything to your taxes, it just means we're gonna use more of the money we already have. But this should hopefully keep us within those targets. So this is the details of the action for tonight is to approve the estimated tax rate of thirteen dollars point thirty-six-one-one-oh per thousand dollars of taxable valuation, and, which is thirty-eight million nine-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand forty-one dollars. And the total budget maximum for all of the funds is two-hundred-and-twenty-four million two-hundred-thousand dollars. And like I was telling the board members earlier, there are lots and lots of questions, and I've told you that before, lots and lots of questions you can have, because every store, every number has a story behind it. So the timelines that we're working under is tonight, February twenty-eighth. We would approve the estimates and publish them, but we wouldn't publish them until around March twenty-fifth, because it can only be between ten and twenty days before the eleventh. We can't do it way early and then do the action four weeks after we publish, it's, it has to be within those guidelines. And then on April eleventh will be the final board approval. April fifteenth, they have to be delivered to the county auditor. And then on May thirty-first, there's always one last, and I will say minor, and it's usually very minor, like under ten cents on the rate, because the state got an updated number on something. In most cases, the board is just stuck in state on the number we publish, unless we're changing it for another reason. But that has to be done by April fifteenth. But this last little adjustment, that's just the state doing their last I guess I just have to say adjustment to what they get in because of the timelines, and that's May thirty-first. Some years we've had it because the legislature wasn't even done yet until May, and even into June, so they leave that open just for that, for those unexpected things. And I will, so we're going to be sitting on this for a while. So as you think about it or look at it, and there's something you want more information on. something that didn't make sense, something you want to consider, we'll be able to deal with that before the April eleventh meeting, and we're going to know more from the legislature too. What's final and what isn't, so this is an estimate to start. But I think we're well within what we need to do.
Well, I guess the real positive too is that we can go only anywhere but down. We can't go up, so this would be our maximum. And I just think, again, keeping within our budgets, I, I commend the administration and, Michael, your staff and because this is really, I think, a precedent if we go back and look at all of the rates in the last thirty years, that what's it, six years in a row that were dropping or flat. I mean, one year was flat, but dropping. But I don't think that's happened much while I've been alive here in Waterloo.
Well, part of that is not to our credit.
Right.
Because the state is taking more of that. But it still had local board decisions of deciding, we're going to take this position. And some of that is because of our action, but...
I mean, in the fiscal responsibility, I think, of staff and we set our budget and we, we adhere to it and lower it if we have to, you know? So I appreciate the diligence to that for sure.
Yeah, fifteen years ago when I came, it was sixteen fifty.
I know. It's a lot lower.
Yeah.
So.
I think it shows good fiscal management, actually, because tonight we did two things. We raised compensation, which should improve our quality of our education if we play our curate. And at the same time, the tax rates went down, and I think it's more than six years. I think it might be ten years.
Right.
One stayed the same, but, but have gone down in terms of the tax rate. But if you notice this year, the actual tax collection in dollars from the citizens of the district also went down.
Right.
From last year in total dollars. And if my quick and dirty math is correct, I think the tax actually on a hundred thousand dollar house went down by about seven percent. So.
Our portion.
Yeah. What's that? Yeah, for schools.
For schools, yeah, we need to put a little caveat on that. Yeah, city and county.
So I think that did our part.
Yep. We've really done our part, yeah. Yeah, and, and Michael is very good at getting back with questions, and so if you have anything or something you see weird or a great idea, send it to him because he's very receptive.
Yeah, Michael, thank you for sitting down with Sean and I today. I actually have a little more understanding of what, I could follow everything today, so.
All right, so if all in favor of setting that public hearing for a certified budget, please stay aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes, aye, seven zero. Thank you. Now, our last action item here is also Mr. Coughlin, and that will be, I guess, information only. But is there anything else you want to add on any of your information? Michael, are just our normal charts?
No, I don't. I don't think I really need to. I just wanted to, because we've been pretty inundated with a couple of projects here. Some of the other reports are still in process, but I just wanted to show by our cash balances that we are following along as expected and being consistent with the previous years, so I just wanted to get you that at least. And pictures are worth a thousand words, so I can be quiet.
And again, any questions on the pictures and the color coding? Talk to Michael. Okay, now we will...
Just real quick, I just want to say thank you for the project reserve fund. That's a good one. To have a visual for the capital projects that we've been working on and the bonds that have ended. Thank you.
And now let's turn it over to Dr. Linderman for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm sure that everyone up here was going to congratulate the West High team, but I'm the first, so I will do it first. This, earlier this afternoon, the West High Girls' Basketball Team played their first round at State, Des Moines, and won. And I, yeah, it was a great, I was going to try to remember the score, but I think they won by sixty-seven fifty-nine. So, yeah, eight points. That is, that is wonderful. So congratulations to all of the players. Congratulations to Tony Pappas, Dr. Pappas, and the coaching staff. And then, you know, also the cheerleaders were there, the band, the pep band was there. So, you know, it was great that they all got to participate in that and, and wonderful win, so congratulations to them. I also just wanted to take a moment to thank the, the people that were involved in making the changes to the APSME and the WESP. I know that Michael and Kingsley are quite humble in the amount of work that happened behind the scenes, but it was monumental. And I, and I know that they collaborated, and Amber's still here hanging with us tonight, and so we're so grateful for all of the people that came, came with a voice and shared their thoughts on that, and, and I'm grateful for the board for approving that tonight. So I just know that it took a lot of work, and Kingsley, you had some of your staff members in your office who were creating some really great charts and worked on that to make sure that it was understandable. And so I just, I'm so appreciative of all of that that happened tonight, so. I, as we look at today with, today being February twenty-eighth, I just wanted to make a comment with tomorrow being March first. I know that my days are numbered as far as the, being the superintendent. I, I look at that calendar, and every time I switch it to a new month, it becomes super real. So I just wanted to offer a couple words of maybe just comfort, I guess, to talk about, you know, we are working really, really hard behind the scenes to ensure a very smooth transition. At the last meeting, Dr. Jared Smith was here, and so we talked, he, he and I shared both shared sentiments that we are working really hard to ensure a good, solid transition. And so I know he's coming later in the week. We're going to meet, he's going to meet with some of our staff members and just start having those conversations. And he's committed to coming, you know, once a month or once every few weeks to, to work here and have those conversations. So, and behind the scenes, and, you know, I'm even doing some things, working with different groups to make sure that we are having the conversations about certain things that will continue and certain things that may be modified and just making sure we're getting things in writing, so we kind of, you know, we're all on the same page. And so I think that work, we've always done, you know, amazing, hard work, but this work over the next four months is just a little bit different because you're just preparing for somebody else to continue on some of that work. So I just wanted to, to offer that, that, you know, I'm, I'm aware that tomorrow's March one, and so we're, we're going to work really, really, really hard over the next four months. And then my last comment is, earlier tonight, you might have seen me step out. For those who are watching this, we were just kind of clarifying. There was a, a decision that was made today about no more masks on the bus. There's no more required masks on the buses. And so there is a message that went out. So just to our viewers who might be watching this or anybody who watches this afterwards, the CDC guidance did change, and so we worked with Durham, and Durham made a decision later this afternoon that they, that they would, what their policy would be as far as the company. And so that, that did go out, and then thank you to Aqui Enche who stepped out for a minute and reiterated the message just to make sure that everyone was crystal clear about that new policy. So that will be starting tomorrow. No more masks on buses. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right, we'll start down with Stacy tonight.
I think I said everything during the meeting, so thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, my turn, okay. Just a note to those school parents as we wind down towards the end of the year, very particularly, you know, seventh grade parents, eighth grade parents. Start looking ahead to high school. Start looking ahead at your planning because it's amazing how much you have to take consideration at an early point there or you will miss opportunities. You know, we're looking ahead, just this last week, I learned something new about, you know, we're just more in different, the military academies, the some of the departments they have, and it's like, it's pretty amazing, like, how far ahead you have to be there and the process involved with that as compared to your fairer applications, but, you know. A lot of time we don't really think about our, our seventh, eighth graders that far ahead, so, you know, for listeners out there, you know, it may seem like a long way, but, you know, as I'm getting ready to put my last child into the high school system, is, 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 you know, they hit sixth grade and then you blink into high school and you blink again and you're, you're done, so just be planning ahead, so.
Stacy?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ask her.
Just a little personal note. I had an opportunity to go to Irving Elementary on last Tuesday, I believe it was. And had an opportunity to read to some kindergarten, or first grade students, excuse me. And also had an opportunity to tour the building. And I hadn't done so in three and a half years, I think, for three years. And it was wonderful. I had a personal tour guide, dressed up in a shirt and tie, and it was awesome, so. And just, I wanted to comment on some of the things that were brought to my attention at the school. And some of the program, programming, the programming that they have and that they've implemented. So they're doing a wonderful job. The school was, it's probably the most colorful school that I've been in in a while, just, you know, the, the walls are adjourned with, I mean, all the students' accomplishments, and it was colorful, so just a positive in, in a, in a, I don't want to say we've been going through a lot of darkness, but it, it definitely brightened my day, so. Just close to Irving and, and their staff and their students as well, because they were all well behaved and well-mannered. So, so close to Irving and their staff and their students.
Thank you, Estee Chino.
The more of the onwordings that I do with different administrators and people here at Waterloo Schools, and the more people I talk to around the state, the more I find out how absolutely incredible our school district is and how lucky we are to have certain pieces in place that we do have in place. And some of the actions that I see us taking in doing the right things to pay, pay people more and try to, you know, make sure that education is truly the, the, the most important thing that we do. Makes me realize every day how lucky I am to be a part of this board and how lucky I am to be a part of the school district. And for anybody watching out there, you have so much to be proud about with the school district, and we are incredibly lucky to have all the pieces and the parts and the people that we do working for us.
Well said.
I just want to piggyback a little bit on what Stacy said and then the STEM, the STEM opportunity. If I remember right, back from the Wall Street twenty-four seven report, I think the average wage in Waterloo for minorities was like twenty-eight thousand or something like that, and whites was, I don't know, forty-five or fifty thousand, something on that range. But then you compare those, both of those or either one of those with the top twenty STEM careers, and they average well over a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, you know, we need to do, we need to keep improving our STEM curriculum. We need to communicate it, as we said earlier. But they really need to, and we need to set our sights high because opportunity being afforded right here in Waterloo Community School District, I think is underestimated, and a lot of people don't realize that, maybe, including us maybe, that we can be ahead of the pack, so, you know, you can move from twenty-eight fifty, but that's not what we want. We want to over hundreds, and that doesn't even include the basic theme of entrepreneurship. And that's the opportunity is well beyond that. So if you're talking about economic equity, STEM is here, if you have the aptitude at all, that's where you need to be. And then another item was, I think minorities own, twenty percent of minorities own their house, and I don't know, sixty percent of, of the whites. So get a good job, get STEM, we offer that. Get a job in STEM and put your name on a piece of property. And that's going to take us out of the Wall Street twenty-four seven. It's all right here. I mean, it really is.
It is here. If, if it would be as simple just to apply it. I mean, it's here. I get it. But, thank you, Lyle. Well, and I tonight went into, I went to the East High Hall of Fame event, and that was a really cool event to see some of our former East High athletes and what they are doing and still doing and, and the great people they are. It just was a really cool event. And then also, we mentioned basketball. I want to shout out for bowling. And I really hope that these bowling three gals could come and visit us because I wrote this all down, and West High junior Sidney Wilson won with a seven seventeen pin total and two sixty-two in one game. I'm like, is that three games she got that in one game, two sixty-two? Then the, and she won state, and then the West freshman, Angelina McConaughey, she had a seven oh eight total and had a two twenty-five game. This is a freshman, so West High looks bright for next year. And then East High came around and had Mallory Carey in the two A division, and she bowled a two twenty-eight game and had a six forty-five total. So bowling, we are top here, right here in Waterloo, Iowa. So way to go, Walhogs. It, yeah, number one, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I was, we need the number one, but, so if, if we can get Mr. Huff to get a meeting, we should honor these girls because this is like awesome, really awesome. And also I wanted to mention that the East High Swing Show, I always go to that and I really enjoy that, is this weekend, Friday and Saturday nights at seven o'clock. So if you are looking for something really fun to do, head over to East High, and you can buy tickets at the door. So our next meeting will now be March twenty-eighth because we have canceled our March fourteenth meeting due to spring break. And prior to that, since we won't have another meeting, is the March twenty-fourth Lowell Open House. And so I want to encourage our community to get out to Lowell and every board member, I happen to be out of town, I apologize, but it is at six, five thirty PM with the shirt program at six thirty. And it is just going to be the showcase of that beautiful school, so. Get out to Lowell on March twenty-fourth, five thirty to seven thirty. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We are adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zero. Pass seven zero. We are adjourned.